Have afflictions that they might be eased and we might keep them in our hearts and our minds. Thank you. Counsel, we have approval of the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 We'll go ahead and move on to approval of the minutes, May 1st, 2014, special meeting minutes. Counsel?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve minutes of May 1st. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
So we have item B, June 24th, 2014, regular meeting minutes.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go on to item seven, awards and recognitions, oath of office for police cadets and police officer. Mr. Jim Fambro?
You're not insinuating I'm a policeman, are you?
We do have, this is a special opportunity, a special honor for a couple of cadets that have joined the police department. Mr. James Swazlo and Mr. Luke Martinez as cadets and also Officer Travis Wilder as an officer. So at this time, I will turn the time over to Mr. Jim Fambro to administer the oath of office on these fine new cadets.
First off, before we go any further, there's something really important about law enforcement that you need to know. You know why God created firefighters? So cops could have heroes.
In all seriousness, congratulations, gentlemen. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, James Swazlo.
Having been appointed to police cadet?
Having been appointed to police cadet.
In and for the town of Taos?
In and for the town of Taos.
For the governing body?
For the governing bodies.
Of the town of Taos?
Of the town of Taos.
On Monday, July 22nd, 2014?
On Monday, July 22nd, 2014.
In the county of Taos?
In the county of Taos.
State of New Mexico's?
State of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico?
The Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Town of Taos municipal code?
The Town of Taos municipal code.
And faithfully and impartially?
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office?
Discharge of the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. I owed your chief that, by the way. James? Welcome aboard, James Swazlo and Mr. Luke Martinez. Thank you for choosing this career. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Travis Wilder?
I, Travis Wilder.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the position of certified police officer?
To the position of certified police officer.
In and for the town of Taos?
In and for the town of Taos.
For the governing body?
For the governing body.
Of the town of Taos?
Of the town of Taos.
On Monday, July 22nd, 2014?
Monday, July 22nd, 2014.
In the county of Taos?
In the county of Taos.
State of New Mexico?
State of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of New Mexico?
The state of New Mexico.
The Town of Taos municipal code?
The Town of Taos municipal code.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties?
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Said office to the best of my ability?
To said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
With this is his commission, and I ask Mayor Barone to present to Officer Wilder. So, the Town of Taos Police Department commission to all whom these represent may come greeting knowing ye that the mayor of the Town of Taos, New Mexico, by virtue of the authority vested in that office by the laws of the Town of Taos, reposing special trust and confidence in Travis B. Wilder, does hereby constitute, appoint and commission him as patrol officer. So, welcome aboard, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. We're very, very, very proud to have all these. Mr. Wilder has extensive experience in the military. Two gentlemen back here have really impressed all of the department. They're gonna be heading off to the academy in August. And we're just really excited about this. This actually brings the department up to full speed and very proud and very honored to have the gentleman come aboard. So thank you very much.
So as we continue to move on with presentations, Regional Development Corporation, Eric Voskus, our EDI program manager, Mr. Bellis also. And before our officers leave, and I just excuse me for one second, before our officers leave, I'd like to, you know, thank them. We did have, you know, our Fiesta just went on this last week. Our fire department, our police department, our Fiesta council, what a successful event. You know, we did have one minor, small, minor hiccup, but thank you guys for your support. Thank you for keeping law and order. Our fire department was right there with you. And again, the Fiesta council, thank you for being a great part of this annual event. So thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Eric Voskus. I am with the Regional Development Corporation, and with me is Kathy Keith, the executive director of the Regional Development Corporation.
Thank you for having us today, Mayor, and members of the council, to address you about REDDIE, which is the Regional Economic Development Initiative. This is an initiative that was started for economic development on behalf of the region in 2008, adopted by communities in northern New Mexico in 2010. We have some faces on the council who have been with us during the adoption of that process. We also have some new faces, so we wanted to come today and give you an update. We thank you for your time and being able to do that. So we want to give you just a brief history of what REDDIE is. We want to talk to you about where the initiative is currently in terms of economic development for the region, and then to ask for your continued partnership as part of the initiative. Thank you.
So, the Regional Economic Development Initiative, or REDDIE, was originally created in 2008. Sorry, thank you, sorry. So, the REDDIE, or Regional Economic Development Initiative, was originally created in 2008, and it started out of Los Alamos, actually. When the county of Los Alamos was trying to decide how to create some, a collaborative effort between some of the regional communities towards shared economic development goals. And so from that came a plan called Progress Through Partnering, I think, on you see on slide three, where the county, basically, Los Alamos County, agreed to fund certain things, including the RTD, that you had the blue buses, they also funding the Espanola Basin Research Regional Planning Forum, and REDDIE. And REDDIE's goals were to diversify the economy and develop workforce, infrastructure, and a few things like that. Now, my organization, or the RDC, was the original contractor, given the goal or the task of developing a long-term plan, a 25-year plan for economic development through a collaborative effort of all these seven communities that were the original signatories towards this MOU, including the Town of Taos. And it was to focus on infrastructure, human capital, or basically your workforce, public policy, and economic development. So we have been working on that for a while. It took a couple of years to actually get the plan off the ground, and then we started to do implementation. And if you look on page six of your slide, you will see the first list of our accomplishments during that time, which was ReadyNet under the infrastructure component.
Yeah, I'll take a brief moment to say too, that in 2010, municipalities and counties in the region adopted the REDDIE Economic Development Plan. So those entities include the city of Santa Fe, Santa Fe County, Los Alamos County, Rio Riba County, the city of Espanola, the Town of Taos, Taos County, and the eight northern pueblos. And then we started to work in 2010. The first piece of the plan was really around infrastructure and what our communities, so over the course of putting together that plan in two years, we had over 30 community-based meetings, talking with community members, local elected officials in the business community about what they wanted the future of their economy to look like. Communities came back and agreed that infrastructure is a very important piece of building a better, more robust economy in northern New Mexico. Under infrastructure, their number one priority was broadband. We're very, very proud of Taos and Taos County, who is really, through Kit Carson as a partner, led the initiative on applying for regional funding for a broadband initiative. We were awarded in 2010, you all well know, because you have right now fiber going in the ground that Kit Carson is putting in. In addition to that, we were awarded grant monies to come from Santa Fe, kind of right at the junction of I-25 and Curius Road, all the way up to the Taos County border.
So on your map, you can see on the page six, you see that map there. The blue is the Kit Carson area that was funded. The pink is the ReadyNet area, which was all funded. And it was three grant applications that went in, dovetailed together as a partnership. And it was successful because we worked together as a region. And we have been live, we have live fiber now in the ReadyNet region since February of 2013, I believe it was.
Eric, real quick, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, if you could just real quickly disseminate the mission of REDDIE as being the middle mile provider, not the last mile?
Okay, so ReadyNet, which is different than the Kit Carson area, which you have fiber eventually, it'll go to your door. ReadyNet, we were not able to secure that much funding, so it is basically serves as a middle mile fiber. It takes the fiber from the main trunk of where, of the telecommunications firms that are running fiber through the state, and it distributes it through the community, but it does not take it to your home or your business. The fiber will run as basically a spine through the community. It'll go to main governmental facilities, like government offices or schools, but it does not go to your actual home or residence. We, ReadyNet is set up to sign agreements with last mile providers, which are the companies that'll come in and arrange to bring it to your home via wireless method or fiber system, and contract with them to allow them to sell their services to the consumer. And the idea is, it is an open network, so you could have multiple competitors working together to have an open system where you don't have one company just with a monopoly on the fiber in your community. Is that helpful? Okay.
The second area that communities identified as important to them was human capital. So realizing that we have to develop a workforce in our communities to support the businesses that we want to have and grow here. UNM Taos has been a key partner in the workforce initiatives that we've done on a regional basis. We're proud of that partnership through a program called Accelerate that has been funded by the U.S. Department of Energy. We've moved approximately 320 students through technical degree programs, where we know on the other end of those programs, we have jobs waiting in northern New Mexico for them, or we're preparing them for the jobs of the industries that we want to build under the Ready program. We have also entered into initiatives to further work keys, which is something that our communities said they wanted to do. It's a program that allows people in our communities that may not have degrees to take tests that evaluate their skill levels, so an employer can tell if they're ready for a certain job or not. If they're not ready, it has training programs associated with it where people can go in and strengthen their skills, so that they do qualify for jobs that are available.
Through the Ready initiative also, we have been empowered to work on public policy development that encourages economic development in the arena that all seven communities have agreed on. So on an annual basis, we have a legislative agenda that we work with on the state. We also promote certain policies at the local government level, and we frequent communications with our federal delegation of federal policies that impact us as a region.
The last area that our community said we need to work on in order to strengthen the economy in northern New Mexico are what they called business services. And they identified three things that needed to happen. We need to put programs in place that support creation of new businesses, that strengthen our existing businesses, so that they add employees and hire new people, and thirdly, that we recruit businesses to the region. We are currently engaged in a program called entrepreneurial networking. Again, we're so proud of Taos, who has been a real leader in the region, with the Taos Entrepreneurial Network, who was founded and helped the rest of the region basically write down the formula that they use in order to strengthen their local business community, which is now being used and applied in Espanola, in Rio Riba County, in Mora, and in Las Vegas. We continue to partner with the Taos Entrepreneurial Network. I think Jason Pfeiffer is here today, representing TEN. We're so pleased to have him, and we work together on a regional basis to leverage funding into your communities together. Just last week, we were awarded a USDA grant for rural economic development to support not only Taos, but the rest of the communities. I think the state director of USDA, I'm gonna speak for him, because he's said this to me before, spends his time going around the state bragging about Taos and northern New Mexico communities who have implemented this program to strengthen their entrepreneurs. He sees more economic activity on the entrepreneurial level in the northern New Mexico communities who have implemented this program than he does other places in the state, and has been a real advocate for the work that Taos is doing through the entrepreneurial networking. Secondly, the expanding of existing businesses. Together, we have started a marketing program. We call it the 2020 Campaign. Really what we're trying to do is recognize those high-growth businesses, businesses that are here and expanding in northern New Mexico. We're so pleased that Taos has nominated businesses who are high-growth businesses from your community. So since 2012, through the campaign, we have recognized Sirius Ware Vapor Organic Beauty, Taos Mountain Energy Bars, and Alpine Fire Safety Systems as high-growth businesses located in Taos, in addition to other businesses located throughout the region that we can all be proud of, that continue to expand and add jobs on a regular basis.
And those are businesses that you really should be proud of, because others will, those ones are specifically selected because they are gonna grow. If we give them the help, they're gonna really help grow your economy locally.
We just want to say a quick thank you and recognize, through this program, the partners who have helped fuel our regional economic initiative, who include Los Alamos County, who made an initial investment in developing the strategic plan for us all to work from, and have continued to fund on an annual basis initiatives that we have identified as important to the communities outside of Los Alamos County, so they do it for a regional perspective. However, in the last couple of years, as their budget has shrunk, they have also started basically lessening their resources for the region, but have made a commitment, at least through next year, to continue to provide some resources.
So the next page would just start talking about some of the clusters. One, the seven communities came together. They asked us to do these different tasks on workforce development, business services, but they wanted us to focus on specific economic clusters that everyone could agree that, throughout the region, that we wanted to support. Those would, there were four original clusters, and we since have added one more, and those are value-added agriculture, technology-related businesses, green and renewable energy businesses, and new media or film industry. Since then, we conducted a, I'll get into that a little bit later, but we added a fifth one, which I'll touch on a little bit later. But let's just go over what we've been working on in those areas. On page 14, we focus on technology. Technology was adopted because in this region, we do have Los Alamos National Laboratory, which has a large workforce of highly skilled people, and the idea we have of skilled workforce there for developing technology-related businesses. So we partner with the New Mexico Tech Council on meetups and a variety of different, and opportunities to get people who are interested in starting businesses connected with the right resources. And we've also been able to steer funding to some of those technology-related businesses in the area. I'm just gonna skip through these fairly quickly, because I know we have, don't want to take up too much of your time. The next one is value-added agriculture. Two focuses here. We've been partnering with the Global Center on Cultural Entrepreneurism on developing cultural tourism, or around the agricultural corridor, for this region. And so there'd be a cultural, a tourism corridor, basically running from Corales through Taos. And so the idea there is you bring in high-dollar tourists who are very interested in these type of areas. And so there's been some efforts there, and we've had our first few test-run tours. And so that's moving forward. Also, just last December, we were able to provide $10,000 to TCEDC to be able to help them buy a new generator for the Mobile Matanza, because it died and they weren't. Well, they're doing great work, and they weren't able to get their truck out very frequently, because they're having to haul another truck with the generator behind it, but we were able to get them a new generator. So we're happy to be able to do that in partnership with Siete del Norte. Next one, new media. In this area, we've been focusing on the film industry. We've partnered with several communities on an initiative called Shoot Santa Fe. It's called Santa Fe because Santa Fe has a cachet or the market potential to people outside New Mexico. They've heard that name many times before. And so we're marketing the entire region as, under the Shoot Santa Fe initiative, where we go to events such as Sundance, we've been there twice, South by Southwest, and the Site Selectors Expo, where film producers basically choose sites for productions, to market the area. We started doing that at the point when the state really stepped back. There was a period during the, when the Martinez administration came back in, where they were not certain whether this was an industry that they were wanting to pursue. We took up the slack, and we've been able to quantify results where several film productions and television series have been brought into the area in large part because the, we've been making sure that people know we're still open for business in that. And another thing we've been doing there very recently, we are funding the development of an app for your phone or your mobile device, for your site selectors, the people who are actually looking for locations, to detail all the different locations we have in these four county area. And we're also setting it up so tourists could use it as well. So if you want to go see where that scene in Long Meyer was shot, you can look it up. Or if you're touring the area, you download that app. It shows you every scene and location in Taos, which was used for a shoot of one sort or the other over the last 10 years. And so I just want to ask one little help there. If you can help us identify locations in Taos, we're still populating that app before it goes live. We want more information. The next one, renewable energy. This is a cluster, when we had the downturn in 2008, really slowed down, but we're still pursuing it through, looking for opportunities around the USDA REAP grants. And we've also been pursuing business recruitment in, directly into the Taos area for businesses that are in the renewable energy, or use heavily, are very specific around renewable energy, where they're wanting to create, well, we have been pursuing business opportunities for Taos in this cluster. I'll just leave it at that. If I can answer any questions, I'll try to explain in more detail. And then there's the fifth cluster. And I'll get into this a little bit more in a moment, but in 2012, we conducted a strengths, weaknesses, opportunity and threat analysis, or a SWOT, on the region that was born largely because of a meeting we had right here in Taos, where we had our seven partners together, representatives from the seven communities, and one of the tasks we've been given is to focus on recruiting businesses into our area. And so we brought the proposal forward, and they suggested, members of the committee suggested that we actually do an analysis to find out whether we would be competitive or not. So we contracted with some site selectors, and I'll get into that in a moment, and they identified whether to be competitive or not. But one area they said is, you should add outdoor recreation industries for manufacturing or services to your area, because these small companies that are scattered throughout the United States, they are located domestically, they like to work where they can play. And it doesn't get much better than this for certain types of outdoor rec industries. So, on that recruitment issue, 2012, we did that SWOT. We hired site selectors to come to the area, interview local elected officials, business leaders. They interviewed over 62 people in the region over a week period, basically to get an idea of how competitive we were. And they interviewed people in these communities that are listed there, Espanola, Taos, Okeechobee, Pawake, our seven partners and some tribal members, just to see whether, within those clusters, we could actually be competitive in attracting businesses. And the short answer was yes, but you have to work together. The, if we have the Town of Taos going after a business, while the County of Taos is not agreeing or cooperating on that, and Espanola is also going after the same business, it just muddies the water, and you end up getting, nobody gets the business. So they suggested that everyone would benefit if you can cooperate on these type of opportunities. So we've been doing that, and we have been pursuing some of these opportunities as a region. We're starting to do that on a regional basis. And we're starting to see, just in the last year, we've really picked it up, and we've seen some successes and, or nibblings of success. We've also done an education development program for economic development for local elected officials. And we are, well, actually, I'm gonna just skip to the last page, which is page 22, just to show you. Taos, I mean, Los Alamos County originally funded this initiative at $250,000 a year. We've been able to leverage that into over $2.5 million. And Los Alamos is still funding us as the primary source of getting this going. And, but we just wanted to know, we're not coming to you because we're asking for a handout. This is a service that we're providing to the entire region. And we've been able to, I think, do some really good work on that. Next steps, though, are talking about how can we work together on a regional basis more effectively? And that, I think, it comes down to the idea of, if we are going to be pursuing businesses on the recruitment area, how can we cooperate more effectively?
So we would, we would formally like to ask to engage with the town on a proposal to recruit for the region. So instead of Taos saying, we may be responding- So instead of Taos saying, we may be responding to businesses from outside the region, that we would respond as a region, saying, welcome to northern New Mexico, marketing us as northern New Mexico for a population base together of about 250,000, which for outside companies looking to relocate is a nice size, whereas they may consider our communities, even Santa Fe, by itself too rural as an area that they wouldn't normally look at. We market ourselves together as a region. We are big enough for them to take a look at. So we would love for this, for the town council to consider that proposal, to be engaged with us on a regional recruiting program. In addition, we'd love to have a further conversation with you about something called the Venture Acceleration Fund, which starts, helps new startup businesses and also expanding businesses. The fund was originally started by Los Alamos National Laboratory, but other communities in the region have started contributing to the fund so that we can fund more startup businesses and help them in their communities. We're lucky that we have several businesses in Taos and Taos County that have been funded. And the more we grow that fund, the more we can help these businesses and create local jobs in the region.
And that fund is for grants or no, zero-interest loans to get, help businesses achieve the next steps in growth? Can we ask, answer any questions?
Councilman Gonzalez?
Thank you, Eric and Kathy, for the presentation. I just want to give some kudos to RDC for all the work that you guys do to promote economic development within this region. And fellow councils, I think it's important that we band together with our brothers and sisters outside of Taos. And I know Tom Blankenhorn sits with me on the Regional Coalition of Landowners which we have made a huge consorted effort to really, really try to not just put Taos on the map, but northern New Mexico on the map. Because I honestly feel there's powers of numbers. There is some tweaking I'd like to see going on with regards to the technical funding that Los Alamos National Labs gives to northern New Mexico in that not make it so constrictive to utilizing the lab's technical resources, but to be able to use that funding and use it outside of the laboratory. So again, I just want to give you kudos. Thank you for the projects that you have brought to light in consideration of Taos, but not just in consideration of Taos, but for the northern region. So keep up the good work, and anything I can do as a counselor, both here in the city and as a member of the regional coalition, please reach out to me. I'll help you in any way that I can.
Thank you.
Councilor Peralta?
Thank you very much. I appreciate all that you're doing for us and how you're trying to make the cooperation between the entities more important, and I think you're on the right track. Although, I just have a question for you. In your presentation, you had the businesses honored in 2012. Who were the businesses honored in 2013?
My apologies on that. I was, when we confirmed that we were going to be here, I was told I had to get the presentation in quickly, and I didn't have a chance to get the 2013 numbers. But I could provide those to you if you'd like me. I could send them to you.
I'm just curious.
And I just also want to extend an invitation to all of you. On August 21st, we are having a state-of-the-region conference at Okeechobee Conference Center down just north of Espanola to go over what Ready's been doing for the last year. And we're going to be doing an exercise around the jobs council to identify what jobs need to be created in each of our community to spur economic growth around something along with what the legislature's doing. Because we're wanting to share this with our local communities because any economic development funds coming from the state are probably going to be based off of those legislative numbers now. And so we have to have that, go through this exercise on every county and municipality to set it up so you can go for those monies in the future. So I encourage you to attend.
Where are your offices?
We're actually, we moved to Espanola two years ago now. We were in Santa Fe, now we're in the Bond House in Espanola.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Counselor?
Can you send us an invitation to our email addresses just as a reminder about this conference?
Absolutely, Counselor. I did send a save the date to everyone on the council. I'm not sure if they got to you or not, but I will make sure that I will send it to, I'll get it to you.
Yeah, thank you. That was an excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you, Counselor.
Oh, I was gonna, just for a moment?
Please, Jason.
Okay, sorry. Should I use a microphone?
Please, if you would.
Thanks, I'll just take a moment. I just want to say, you know, from TEN's standpoint, TEN wouldn't be here without Ready, RDC, Los Alamos Connect, one of the clusters that's been formed, Kathy and Eric. There's been many years, you know, being a nonprofit, and we know the nonprofit world, how many are in our community. They've really helped us along and continued, continued, helped us continue our service, us being the arm in Taos that they choose to fund for economic development along with the other counties that were mentioned. And something else that's happened over the short time that I've been director of TEN in two years is Alamosa, Colorado, Chama, and now Colfax County have all started entrepreneurial networking programs, very similar to TEN's, based on this model that's been created through the RDC. So that's one of the reasons I'm involved, is I really see the benefit. I've seen it work. I think all of you have seen it work. And I just thank you for hearing them out and partnering. That's all.
Jason, you, would you just want to expand a little bit on the TEN's program? You know, it's a great opportunity within our community that I've been to several meetings, and it's a great networking opportunity. So if you would, and where you meet and at what time?
Sure, I'd love to. So we meet the third Wednesday of every month in the mural room at the old county courthouse, thanks to all of you for letting us use that space. 5:30 to 7:30. And the organization is based on networking, plain and simple, but we do it in a fashion that has been proven and that works, our methodology. It's connecting entrepreneurs, those with ideas, and even existing businesses with the resource that they need right at that given moment to help them make that next step. Real quick example, just recently, yesterday, last night, I ran into Jaclyn, who owns Bison Star Naturals. She makes natural, organic soaps on the pueblo. We've worked with her on and off for help with branding, help with accounting, marketing, and just found out from her that she's hired her first employee because of the farmer's market on the plaza, because she's seen this increased growth in sales in her products, so she's having to expand production and hire employees. So that's just a little example of how our program has helped her, and in a sense, you know, the community coming together, having the farmer's market on the plaza, has helped her create this employee. And I'm hoping eventually, we can send her to the Venture Accelerate Fund and get her some more money. But that's it, in a nutshell.
Thank you for what you do.
You're welcome. Thank you all, I appreciate the time.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Kathy.
And Councilman Gonzalez, we appreciate you serving on that board and continue to make sure that, you know, we, Taos is represented, and we thank you for that.
Thanks, Mayor.
So, moving on down the agenda, we move on to citizens' forums. Citizens wishing to speak shall limit, will limit to five minutes. You know, if it's redundant, we'd ask that, you know, we just don't repeat the same thing again and again. But we'll go ahead and start off with Bridget Meyer. Bridget, thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Mayor, Council, I'm really happy to be here today. My name is Bridget Meyer. I'm representing friends of TCEDC. And our mission is to raise TCEDC's profile in the community so that more people are aware of all that they do. We're also interested in fundraising for them. And so we are asking the council, we're asking the town of Taos to please designate the second week in November, ongoing, but this will be the first annual TCEDC Week, a celebration of the harvest of land, food, water, and the cultures of the peoples of northern New Mexico. And if we have your official approval and designation, we will be able to enroll other groups, hopefully, such as UNM, and have a really big marvelous celebration. As you know, they have their Harvest Festival every year, but we'd like to make this much bigger and have many more people participate. So we're asking for your official imprimatur.
Okay, the, just a recommendation if you'll get with staff, with Mr. Bellis and Mr. Jake Codwell, and so we get that officially on the agenda for approval.
For a vote?
Yes, well, for a present, you know, yes, for a vote.
I'm a little.
For the designation, basically, that you're asking for.
I see. So you would like me to make a phone call, an appointment?
Yes.
And follow up with that?
Yes.
I would be happy to do that. Thank you so much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And TCEDC is, I want to say, is a great part of our community. You know, they continue to support our local farmers, and, you know, the Mobile Montana is a great opportunity, as you heard here a little before.
Felt like a great segue from Ready.
And thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you for your support. Any questions?
Councilwoman Cantu, I know.
That's my favorite organization, so.
Let's, I mean, there are people in this town who've been here for almost 30 years who have no idea what they do. So we really want to put them on the map in a big way. And part of that whole tourism, you mentioned the conference that happened yesterday. We want to be in that corridor, we want to be networking with all the other groups. But if the town of Taos, we have this annual TCEDC Week, and, you know, banner over the paseo, you know, it could be a lot of fun, big celebration.
Yeah, I think.
Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
They're an organization worth supporting.
I'm sorry?
They bring so much to the community that they're an organization that are so worth supporting.
Thank you for your support. I'll follow up.
Thank you again. So Mr. Joseph Quintana?
Mayor Baroni, Councilwoman Cantu, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilman Peralta, Councilman Han, Manager Bellis. My name is Joseph Quintana. I am a Tausenyo. I am also a member of the Taos Fiesta Council. And I'm here today to just thank you. Thank you for opening up your arms in our community to all Tausenios and to our visitors and friends and families, to our neighbors in Santa Fe and Espanola and Las Vegas, and their community representatives for this year's Fiesta de Taos. Fiesta's are all about community. The gathering together as a community to visit and catch up and to laugh for the ability, like in my partner Christine's case, for her mother and all her sisters and their children and their children to come together in Taos every year for Fiesta's to celebrate their lives. Fiesta's are about family. It's about the biggest smile ever imagined on my granddaughter Zaria's face after she picked the pink unicorn on the Tio Vivo. It's about dancing and the smell of music, smell of food and music. And yes, it is about giving thanks to whatever god or power you believe in for all we have. It's about who we are as Tausenios. How beautiful to continue, in this generation, like my father and his father, to use the beautiful gathering place at the center of Taos, a plaza designed to gather the people of Taos to celebrate. Like Santa Fe in Las Vegas with their age-old plazas, and now Espanola, who has developed their plaza in need of a place to gather their community. We all urge you to always protect our gathering place for my granddaughter and for her children and for all generations to come. The Taos Plaza is the heart of Taos. Finally, I thank everyone who worked hard to make this celebration so special for our community, to Chief Weaver and all the law enforcement and the EMS, to all the grandpas and grandmas and mothers and fathers and brothers and sisters, to the Lions Club, to Jeff Northrup, for creating endless smiles for our children on the Tio Vivo. And again, to you, our community leaders, for recognizing its invaluable importance. Que viva la fiesta! Thank you.
Que viva!
Que viva!
So again, thank you for your support. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Quintana.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Mr. Gene Sanchez? We have one second, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have, I'm here just to, I'm known as the street complainer. You know, I sat and watched every morning at the spa, the street sweeper cleaned a cellar that sued five days a week. And they haven't cleaned my street in five and a half months. I still have the debris from the windstorms that we had in April. The weeds are now grown to the point that they're starting to overlap into the street. I would ask this council to set up a schedule or something so we can have a street sweeper clean our streets instead of just one street. Give you an example. Yesterday morning, the public service took a big truck and washed the street, the cellar that sued completely. But after that, here comes the street sweeper to do it again. This morning, he swept it again. So I think we need to look at a schedule to clean our streets. It's a way of life, you know, in terms of our streets need to be beautified. If we don't do that, they're getting to be pretty bad. And please, if you do decide to go cut the weeds and sweep it, don't send that big muncher that they sent last year that makes, I still have the scars in the pavement because it didn't fit into where the weeds are at. So I think we need to look at, you know, cleaning the streets. And that's one way to do it, is first cut the weeds, you know, sweep the streets and beautify ourselves. Also, the thing about it, you need to start looking at, there's more vendors on the streets than there is in the town. You know, I have no problem with people trying to sell their wear, but some of them are just, you know, really not appropriate in terms of there's a lot of old trucks for sale, where things that, I think that we need to start looking at. Beautifying the town so that people can not only see the plaza, but there's also an alley-in area of the plaza. That's where we live. I'm sure that all of you live somewhere within the town, and we'd like to see something done about that. There's a lot of other issues that we need to look at in terms of, you know, beautifying the town. But I think first, we need to clean the streets and cut the weeds. And that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thanks, Gene.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez, what street are you on?
All right.
What street are you on? I'm sorry.
The famous one, that's the Hill Lane. There's also the Martinez right next to it. Valverde, you know, if you go down Valverde, the weeds are just starting to overcome that. I think that, and you know, that's only my area. You know, if you go to the other areas, you can see that it's really starting to affect, you know, look pretty bad. So that's why I'm here. And I hope you can do something about that.
Mr. Bellis, I already put a request in with Mr. Trillo. Well, I mean with, I'm sorry, with French Espinoza, so.
Yeah, you know, the thing about it is, you know, when you go, the guys go down and clean it, and they usually, you know, they take the big munchers, and he doesn't clean anything. All it does is make it worse. You need to go in there with weed eaters, you need to cut the branches and everything that overlap into the street. A half portion of my street is now the trees, you know, the weeds and everything are just overlapping into the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know there's a number of people from the, it looks like the airport, so we'll go ahead and take you as you want.
Good afternoon. My name is Marilyn Hoff. It's nice to see all your friendly faces again. I've been doing a lot of studying of the EIS and the various things that led up to the decision of the expansion of the airport. And one of the things that is a theme throughout, I've read all the comment letters and things like that, is that there doesn't seem to be much community support for the building of the new runway at the airport. You know, there was a survey taken that was overwhelmingly opposed to the airport. I think that was back maybe 15 years ago. And then in the EIS, the comments are pretty much overwhelmingly opposed to it, except for people. pretty much overwhelmingly opposed to it, except for people who had a vested interest in the airport. So, I guess, at this point, there's, there's headlong rush to get the airport built, and I'm, I'm wondering why the rush. All of a sudden, it's so urgent to get the airport built, even though it's been functioning for forty-seven years, and, and I know that safety has been cited, but in my research, it seems like the safety is for the very big planes that would be able to land in Taos if the, if the runway were built. So it's a safety that is most auspicious to bringing in very big planes. So, in light of that, I would like to ask you, what's the rush? And let's slow down, and, and I think you should probably take the temperature of public opinion on this before going so fast into doing this airport. And so I would like to request that first, that we put on the next agenda of the town council meeting, so that, in fact, it will be something that the committee will take a vote on, that we discuss the expansion of the airport there, but also with it in mind that we will be requesting that you hold the community forum, which you have more or less promised us. You will hold that in advance, in advance of the bidding process. So we would like you to delay putting the airport contract out to bid until after we have had a community forum, so you can take the temperature of your populace, because in fact, especially people living out from Taos, who are the most affected by it, seem to be highly opposed to this airport, because it affects their quality of life quite a bit. And so thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Hope Bukler, and I want to echo what Marilyn just said, a plea to slow down, and try to consider the expansion a little more thoroughly among yourselves, and also with the public. My concern is that there was only one proposed plan, and it seems in a case like this, there might have been some alternative plan to the, to the runway. And I would like to ask the mayor and council members also to think locally. I know local pilots have expressed need for crosswinds runway, and it certainly would be a benefit for their small aircraft, but the heavier, larger jets don't need a crosswinds runway. The wind direction doesn't affect them. Typically, the crosswind runways are eighty percent of an existing runway. Now, our runway, existing runway, is a mile long. The proposed runway is a mile and a half, and a smaller aircraft don't need that. The larger aircraft would definitely benefit, because they would have a longer runway to take off on, but I really feel we need to limit the larger jets coming in from we don't know where. It's not what will benefit us locally, whereas a modest crosswinds runway would benefit the local aircraft. Citizens have expressed legitimate concerns about increased traffic of these larger jets. Noise pollution, air pollution, water pollution, fuel, possible fuel pollution, because the larger jets would require the larger fuel storage, and we all know about Kirkland. So, there's also the question of taxpayers' money. The larger one and a half mile runway would be very expensive. So, my idea is to open it up for public discussion, as Marilyn suggested, before any, the proposal is now put out to bid, and consider the idea of building a modest crosswinds runway, and that might satisfy both the local pilots and the concerned citizens who want to limit too much traffic from larger planes. So thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hope.
Jean Green. I had hoped to get this to you sooner, but I'll just hand it to you at the, afterwards. We, the ad hoc committee of the Taos Airport Coalition, asked for a delay in the bidding process, and for a public forum to allow the public to express concerns and ask questions well before the Taos Regional Airport Improvements Project bidding begins, and I know that is very soon. The public has not had a chance to weigh in on this. The last public hearing was, I think, in two thousand and six. There've been major developments happen since then. We have the Rio Grande del Norte National Monument, which you're counting on for tourist dollars. If we have military planes and jets flying low over the monument and in the gorge, how is that going to affect our tourist dollars? I know this seems like a, a no-brainer to accept twenty-four million from the FAA, however, what are we getting for that? We probably are not getting local jobs as per, you know, that there's no, probably no way that you can give a discount, I mean, you know, when you set the bidding, that you give five or ten percent bonus to local contractors, at least according to your last meeting, it looks like that's not going to happen. How many local people are we going to hire? It's a two-year, it's been, this is suddenly a big emergency for safety, so I guess you have shortened the time for the construction from three years to two years. So we're going to have a few jobs working on that, but we're not going to have sustainable jobs, like what we're talking about, what, like you just got this, this, this presentation from the Regional Development Corporation, those are sustainable jobs. That's what we need. We need our people here in the community working. We need vocational technical school. We need local, sustainable jobs. Value-added agriculture, all those things that they talked about. Rather than a lot of wealthy people that are coming in on their jets up to the ski valley, and even skipping the town, because they have plans to build their big developments up there with their hotels, and restaurants, and grocery, and everything else, and big developments around the airport, this is not necessarily going to bring us jobs. We need local, sustainable jobs. The, the public has not been consulted about this, and this is a huge public works project, twenty-four million dollars. You need to hear from the people about this, and I'm, I'm so glad that you're going to be doing a forum for us, but if the bidding starts before that, what's the point? What is the point? You will have started the legal process going with thirty days to assign a contract. We need, you need to hear from us before you rush into this. And as Marilyn said, what is the urgency? FAA says this is urgent? Why is this urgent? It's not urgent for safety. That's bogus. You are shortening the cross, the main prevailing winds runway for our local, small plane pilots. That is less safe. You are having cross traffic, no air traffic controller. That is less safe. So what is this about the FAA's urgency to do this? We need to know. We, you work for us, and we have some petition signatures, about almost eight hundred petition signatures from locals, mostly local people. So people care about this. They may not be here today, because they're at work, and they might be working three jobs. So people do care about this, and we ask for you to give the public a chance to weigh in on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
You can just give that to Renee.
Well, I'm not going to give it to you yet.
Okay.
I just want you to see that we have-- Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good afternoon. Mayor, Councilman. My name's Andres Fargas. Mayor Peralta will recall that the original proposal thirty-some-odd years ago was to create a crosswind runway for safety reasons. That has changed. Now, the crosswind is still there, but what has changed is that it's called a development of the airport, is a runway that, that has extended, not the crosswind, but the, the runway has been extended substantially to accommodate much larger airplanes. That is a major concern of, of many of the citizens, and I will also mention that the initial environmental impact statement that was prepared was fraudulent. It was found fraudulent by Judge Meacham in the federal court, and another one was issued. But again, this is not an issue of patriotism, that we are, we have genuine concerns about the military planes landing and taking off from this airport, and that has been suggested, and there has been evidence, anecdotal and visual evidence of Ospreys flying over Arroyondo and that area, and we, if you let this out for bidding without first having a, a community, hearing from the community at large, because there has been no effort by the county, the town, or the pueblo to get together and find out what people from all of the entire community think. The power and jurisdiction of the town is very small, but it, the impact of its decisions are substantial, and they affect a much greater group of people than just the town. Anyway, I respectfully ask that the matter not be let out for bid. If you do that, it forecloses entirely the process of hearing by the people. Thank you.
Councilman Peralta?
Mr. Mary, if I could just give a little bit of correct information. The original impact was not an impact statement. It was an analysis, and Judge Meacham said that was not sufficient, and that was the reason for the impact statement. The original runway was over ten thousand feet, and it was reduced by the FAA to eighty-six hundred feet, because they felt that there would no way in fifty-year history or, or future of the airport, that it would need an accommodation of that length, so it was shrunk, and that wasn't done in ninety-four. So just for information, that, that's where it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Peralta.
And thank you, Andres.
Mayor and council, I'm glad to be able to speak with you today. My name is Rick Brown, and I'm fairly new to Taos, and since I've been here, I've, I've tried to find out and keep abreast of issues that would affect the quality of life of people here, and, and make this continue to be the same kind of community that attracted me here in the first place. In reading about this, I've developed some concerns about the airport issue, and a lot of these things have been touched on, but let me say a few more things about that. We retired here, and, and before we retired, we looked at several other communities around the southwest area, and, and one, for example, was Durango, Colorado, and, and at first, we thought that Durango might be affordable, and we liked the community, but, but then toward the ski area, the property values just increased enormously, because there's so many mansions and condos were built, and just going up to the ski area, and, and learned more about that, that we found that that just increased values just all over the area where it made that unaffordable. And when we checked out Taos, we drove up to the ski area, and, and we liked the way it was, and we still do. It's a ski area, and people that like to ski know that it's, it's a very good ski area. My, my son's a good skier, and he likes to go there, he says it's a great place to ski. But there, there really aren't very many condos up there, really no mansions going up there, and, and we would like to see it stay that way. We like it pretty much the way it is, and, and the talk is that one reason that they may be interested in this airport expansion is like some other people have suggested, you know, and, and there is a new owner up there, you know, bringing big money from outside, and, and we think that, that one reason might be to, to bring, you know, the more jet-set skiers in, and to, like people have said, would tend to build their mansions and big condos, and have a big development there, and, and that's not going to do anything for the people of Taos. I think a lot of the people that come here to ski now are just more modest-income people, who would be more likely to stay in motels down here in Taos, and spend money in Taos, instead of expensive places up there on the mountain. Another thing that's been touched on is, you know, the, one of the reasons for a rush is, is that there's supposed to be federal money that, that you have to grab now, or it'll be gone, and, but I want you to think about, you know, just because the federal government hands you money, is, is this really something that you want? You know, I hear all the time, you know, that the things that are really in the public interest, you know, the, the government says, you know, "We can't afford that, you know, we're just about broke, we can't afford that." So, so if they are handing money, I think you, you might think, you know, "Well, maybe they want something out of it," and, and what they might want, you know, I know a while back, you know, the, the Town of Taos went on record saying that, that we don't want military flights over our area, and I applaud the community for doing that, and, but, and people might think, you know, that these people be just like everybody else, everywhere else, if we wave some money at them, you know, they'll, they'll come around, you know, we'll kind of get in by the back door, but, but I think they look at things different than the way I look at them, that they may look at this as an empty place, you know, just, just empty country with mountains and canyons, a place where we like to do military training, but, but I don't think the people here look at it that way at all. So I, I think, you know, we, we really need to stick to our guns. If they're waving money at us, because they want to get their military aircraft in here, you know, I don't think most of the people here want that, so I think the, the money sounds good, you know, but how many local pockets is it going to be going into? I suspect very few. So, I think everybody who's spoken is exactly right, you know, the community needs to be heard from, and have a meaningful forum, which, which means before any contracts are let, you know, and, so, so, so if the community does end up supporting this, you know, it'll be something that the community's behind, but, but if not, you know, you work for us, so I think that, that, that the people of the community should be first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Hi, my name is Louise Hummingbird, and I also came to speak out against the airport expansion. I'm also very concerned that this was a deal done behind closed doors, and so it makes you wonder what the, the true motives are behind it. Also, I don't think it will improve the quality of life for Tausenios, it will do just the opposite, it will make it worse. I've heard proponents of the project mention-- I've heard proponents of the project mention job creation. Projects of this type usually go to outside contractors and these are temporary jobs. We can't just do things for financial reasons all the time. That's what's got this country in such a mess. We've destroyed our environment. Taos, a lot of people come to Taos because it's a beautiful place. It's quaint. We have a sense of community here. I'm afraid the airport expansion is going to just make this into a playground for the rich. And those of us that love this place and people who have lived here a long time and have roots here might not even be able to live here anymore. Also, if you're concerned about the tourism business dropping off, it hasn't dropped off because we didn't have an expanded airport runway. It's dropped off because the middle class is dying off. So, just bringing in, you know, allowing some super-rich people to come in here and spend money up in the ski valley is not going to help us. It's going to bring more pollution, noise, and otherwise. So many homes have been built so close to the airport, the quality of life is going to be affected. Some of the homes are already affected and this is going to make it worse. I'm also concerned about the military eyeing the new runway and because, you know, they've wanted to come in here before and do their low-altitude flyovers. So, all in all, it just seems like a really bad deal for Taosseños. And, you know, maybe a great deal for super-rich that want to make this into a Disneyland. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, Louise.
Brown?
This is a letter that Fred Fair... An email that Fred Fair sent to me. He's been using the airport for fifty years now, more than anybody knows the wind patterns or understands.
Can you use the microphone?
We can't hear you. Come on, sit.
Fred has been using the airport for fifty years and he understands how it works, the wind patterns. And basically, what he is saying in this letter, because it's a little technical, is the main runway, the new runway that's being proposed, will not really be usable by the small craft because it's running perpendicular to the crosswinds and to the prevailing winds. And according to Fred, the prevailing winds, ninety-six percent of the time, the small craft won't be able to use the new runway. And the new runway will tend to become the main runway. So, what will be happening is the large planes can use the new runway because they need length and they need weight capability and they're not affected by crosswinds like small planes are. Small planes are affected by crosswinds over fifteen miles an hour. So, whenever the wind is blowing more than fifteen miles an hour, the large planes will be landing on the new runway and the small planes will be landing on the old runway. And so, you're going to have... The planes aren't going to all be approaching in parallel to the airport. And there potentially is going to be some serious safety problems. And so, according to Fred, the airport's quite a bit less safe the way it's designed. So, here's the letter and then I want to talk a little bit more.
I'll take a question. Sure. I'll take a thought. I want some air holes. Just a minute.
Okay. For the last... I grew up in Seiko. I've been there since nineteen fifty-six. And for the last forty years or so, I have seen, and many people have seen, that the main basis of this economy in Taos that's running alongside the art and the tourism is converting fields into home sites. And if we... We had an incredible jewel here forty years ago, a very beautiful agricultural community with the Seikis that are hundreds of years old. And it is being converted into home sites. We've all seen it. And the problem with this is, is that maybe we'll have another fifty years of converting the rest of the land into home sites and it will create a lot of construction jobs. But once that's done, it's done, it's permanent, and the damage is done and it's no longer an agricultural community. So, an agricultural community, if it's really preserved, can last for thousands of years. It can go on and on and on. The fields can continue to produce. What's happening is the local people here are being squeezed out by the cost of living. And the jobs that the airport could bring will never afford the local people the increased cost of living if the jet-setters... If this becomes too convenient for the type of people that like to fly in and out and ski and have their ski homes, it will never afford the cost of living for the locals to afford the taxes, to afford all the increased cost of living that's already happening. And so, it's, in my opinion, it's our biggest economic problem here in Taos is the cost of living. And the airport has the potential to really exacerbate that tremendously. The ski valley does want regular flights in here. The manager at the ski valley told me that. And so, that's my biggest concern. And let's see. That's basically it, is the safety of the airport. Oh, one other thing. There, from the very beginning, we have not had proper public notice and hearings on this subject. We had the EIS and everyone opposed it. You guys, in my opinion, it would be better if we had public input to see if you really do have support from the community for this airport. Because if you don't and it's installed and it causes serious problems, it's a legacy that you don't want to have. So, I just think that it's very important to delay the bidding process and open up hearings for the neighborhood associations and do it properly. It's not been done properly. Darren Cordova did not give adequate notice, went out, made a deal at the pueblo. I found out that the pueblo did do this because they were thinking of a casino. And now, they have realized that the people that would come in on airplanes are not the type that would even gamble at a casino. So, it's really a mistake they made. So, anyway, I am just asking for hearings, proper hearings with the neighborhood associations and do it properly before the bidding goes out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Annette Norvell and I don't live in the city, although I own some property here. I live out in the country and there are planes that fly over Arroyoondo all the time. We've been looking at the possibility of extension of the airport, but it sounds like this isn't just crosswind extension. This is going to be something much bigger. People up in the ski valley, I guess there are some new owners. They're going to do some renovation and building and all kinds of what they call progress. The Desmontes, they have a great big something, huge fields that have now are just dirt that they want to sell to wealthy people, build homes, dig wells for everybody. I worry about the water and I think we all ought to be worried about the water. But as far as this is concerned, this just screws up the standard of living that people have come to desire around here. We're small... This is a town of Taos, not the city, not the whatever you want to call it, some large metropolitan area, just a small town. I don't need five minutes. I just want to say everything that everybody else has said, ditto for me. And I hope that we can have some input from the town because there are a lot of people that are very interested in this, who could not come to this meeting today, but would come to a meeting and would give their opinion. And so, that's it. Ditto for me.
Thanks, Annette.
Anyone else?
Ditto for me. We got ditto for us all.
Hello? About three years ago, shortly after...
Stephen, your name for the record, just...
Stevens Hall. About three years ago, almost immediately upon returning to Taos, I noticed that there was an arroyo that was being filled. And I... About three years ago, when I first returned to Taos, I noticed that there was an arroyo being filled. And I wondered why. With what little I know about planning, landscape architecture, it didn't make sense to me. And it sat on my mind for the longest time and I saw it, new piles show up there and I kept thinking, "Why?" And finally, I asked a question earlier this year of the town council. But before I go to that point, let me just read you some things from the code. This is the town code. Chapter fifteen twenty is flood damage. Fifteen twenty oh forty is methods of reducing flood losses. In order to accomplish its purposes, this chapter uses the following methods. Oh forty C, control the alteration of natural floodplains, stream channels, and natural protective barriers which are involved in the accommodation of floodwaters. Oh forty D, control filling, grading, dredging, and other development which may increase flood damage. Chapter fifteen twenty oh fifth, section oh fifty, terms defined. Floodplain management: the operation of an overall program of corrective and preventive measures for reducing flood damage including floodplain management regulations. Floodplain management regulations. Zoning ordinances, subdivision regulations, building codes, health regulations, special purpose ordinances such as a floodplain ordinance, grading ordinance, and erosion control ordinance, and other applications of police power. The term describes such state or local regulations in any combination thereof which provide standards for the purpose of flood damage prevention and reduction. Regulatory floodway: the channel of a river or other water course and the adjacent land areas that must be reserved in order to discharge the base flood without cumulatively increasing the water surface elevation more than a designated height. Chapter fifteen twenty, section oh eighty, establishment of development permit. A floodplain development permit shall be required to ensure conformance with the provisions of this chapter. Chapter fifteen twenty, section oh ninety, compliance. No structure or land shall hereafter be located, altered, or have its use changed without full compliance with the terms of this chapter and other applicable regulations. Chapter fifteen twenty-four, storm drainage. Oh forty, definitions. Drainage easement: public right-of-way dedicated to the town of Taos for the purpose of handling storm drainage. Water course: any river, creek, arroyo, canyon, draw, wash, or any other channel having a definite bank and bed with visible evidence of the occasional flow of water. Section oh fifty, terrain management regulations. Intent and purpose: it is the purpose of the terrain management regulations to ensure sound and orderly development of the natural terrain, protect life and property from the dangers of flooding and the hazard of improper cuts and fills, minimize erosion and destruction of the natural landscape, protect the scenic character of Taos from the visual blight of indiscriminate cuts and fills and devegetation resulting from extensive grading, and otherwise protect public health, safety, and welfare. Section oh sixty, storm drainage performance standards. Number twelve, existing water courses shall not be disturbed. Any proposed excavation, fill, or channel improvements shall be reviewed and approved by the code administrator and/or town council. Number thirteen, all floodways shall be dedicated as drainage easements or drainage right-of-way. There is here clear intent and clear direction, but I think it can be even clearer. And I say that because when I asked the question in January about the fill permits, Mr. Cordova, to whom I addressed the question, turned immediately to Mr. Rodriguez, the former town manager, and who without hesitation answered, "Yes, everything's in order. The permits, the paperwork's in order." And he looked back to Mr. Cordova, who looked at me and essentially repeated the same thing. I don't know if I can call it a lie yet, but it's certainly not truthful because there are no permits whatsoever for any fill on that, on a piece of property, the arroyo that I was looking at. Here are some aerial photos. The first one is two thousand and five. The second one is two thousand and ten. They clearly show that nothing... No fill exists in two thousand and five. It does in two thousand and ten. I suppose you could go to Google Earth and get a more recent photograph. I've asked the planning department. They have searched back to two thousand and five. They have no permits for fill in that arroyo. I've spoken to the field office of the Albuquerque Field Office of the Army Corps of Engineers and they have authorized no fill permits. Matter of fact, they don't even consider themselves having jurisdiction because of the nature of the overall destruction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't worry. Just thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Anybody else under Citizens Forum?
I have a question. Why aren't we using the podium where people can look?
The chief requests that we use these right here.
Okay, because... Good afternoon, town council, mayor, manager, attorneys, and staff, and my fellow constituents of the town of Taos and Taos County. I would like to just basically summarize some of the issues from the last EIS, of which I read from page one to the end, and Marilyn Hoff and Jean Green have read the two thousand and twelve edition. The comparison of our airport expansion looks to, if I remember correctly, now Vale, Steamboat, and Rudosso. And having lived in Route County for quite a few years, I'm very familiar with the Vale Airport in Eagle, actually, location, and Steamboat, which is in Hayden, nineteen miles away. So, one thing I noticed, that the quality of life might seem and appear better, but I could not purchase a property when my daughter was in school there because my house in Route County would cost from one point seven-five to two point two-five million dollars. I didn't pay for that price-tagged house. And it had a lot to do with the escalation of, in terms of development, and the influx of the community with the airport expansion in Steamboat. I saw the same thing happen in Vale. A lot of my friends moved to outline areas of Eagle and then some have even moved to Durango and Taos outskirts of Peonia, the bread valley of Colorado. So, I've seen firsthand the affected valuation of property taxes that results, and it doesn't come usually in a few years. It may take eight, nine years, but it will come. Once you open the can of worms and, you know, what I'm saying is, you can't put the lid on it. And so, right now, what I'm looking at is this urgency issue is the addressment. If you do start with the bidding process, I have some questions right now. Mr. Mayor, as an owner of the Ogin Saw Mill, will you be able to step aside and not have conflict of interest with taking business from the airport expansion for any materials they might need to purchase?
Not a problem.
Okay. That helps me. I know that was an issue with our previous councilman, who's no longer sitting on the council. So, I... who's no longer sitting on the council. So, I appreciate that honesty there. Other areas, too. I haven't looked up the owners currently along the border, but I do plan to look who has property there and who is related to who, to see who's going to benefit from the expansion, because I can see that probably our billionaire Bacon, at Bacon Valley, which I have decided to call it rather than T., Touski Valley, will be looking for business associations of, to merit the expansion for his, what do you call it, business potential. So, I guess the addressment mainly is that we need a broader scope of information to the county. I've spent time in southern part of the county lately, in Penasco, and people have not seen, or just seen little blurbs. I think Mr. Bellis said that there was a decent article by J.R. Logan, and I'm trying to, I mean, that's the only one I have to circulate. That's the only public information we have on this airport issue to date that gives more of a broad spectrum of this resurrected EIS going forward with expansion. And what we're asking for is just more information. I'm going to call the radio stations to see if there's a way to have some public information formats, just not new shows, but give us this time in the next six weeks, so the town and the citizens of the town from both sides could have some discourse along with the public forum, because I think that has merit. People need to understand what would go on in terms of when it goes to bid and to construction and, and to be built. And, you know, I personally am, have been opposed to it, because my property is near the airport. In another chapter of my life, I lived near Los Angeles Airport in a very wealthy neighborhood, and it didn't bother me to see the jets flying in the distance, because I lived with a, what do you call it, I was right at the beach, so I couldn't hear the jets. But when I drove down to National City to pick up friends flying in or flying out, it's just the most outrageous sound, and I'm still talking about smaller airports like the regional airport in Santa Fe. So, we're looking at, what are we competing with? I mean, is it totally up front? The safety issue is not about safety, really, and I realize that you're, you know, in this untenable position, but if you want to look at fulfilling your duties, it's time to let the constituents know all the facts and let them come forward, too. And, like I said, I'm just really trying to get word out right now, so people have information, summaries of the EIS and what it will entail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
I just forgot to ask you, we would like to be put on the next agenda, so that you can take action on delaying the bidding, if possible?
I don't, well, I don't know how that would work, Council. Let me turn to you, Mr. Caldwell.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you know, if the question being posed is whether you can delay the bidding on the project, I think that's pretty straightforward. I think, frankly, that that's probably a decision within the purview of the Town Manager, but at the same time, you certainly don't have to do that. I think this discussion is clearly spirited, and I think will continue. I think it would probably be good to keep the public informed about the timeline of that bid process and where things stand. And I think, at this point, it probably would be premature to take an action like that until that kind of public information is vetted and disclosed.
We did promise you that we would have a forum, and we will continue forward with that.
Well, we're asking for a delay on the bidding, and we want it to be on the agenda so that you can take action, because you cannot take action from a Citizens Forum.
Counselor Peralta?
From my part, Mr. Mayor, no delay.
No delay, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, I can't even hear you.
No delay.
At this point, there's, there's not a majority to move forward in holding a delay, but there is, we will have a forum to answer questions that are being brought up by the majority of the people here.
We would like to be put on the agenda, so that you can consider it as a, as a council.
Again, there's no, we don't have a majority to put it on the, on the, on the agenda at this point. And it's not the agenda as an agenda item, so we can't even, we can't even ask that at this point.
You cannot put us on the agenda?
No. Okay. So, we'll go ahead and move on to-
I guess, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm just a little confused. We can't take action.
Correct.
But, Mr. Caldwell, putting this discussion on the agenda in two weeks, I don't see a problem with that. What's the hang-up here?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just to be clear, the, the agenda is not established by the action or inaction of the council at a prior meeting. The mayor ultimately sets the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to either place or not place this item on the next agenda. And that's not a decision that would have to be made today necessarily. I'm certain the mayor would be swayed if the council exerted some pressure today to put it on the next agenda, but it doesn't seem that's forthcoming. So, Counselor Hahn, to answer your question, it certainly can be on the next agenda. There's no reason that it can't be. The question is whether it will be.
And we'll consider that, Counselor Hahn. We'll consider it.
So, I hear the mayor saying he will consider it.
Yes, we'll consider it.
So, we'll-
And we'll make sure that there's enough public comment, period, to get the word out that it will be or won't be on the agenda. Okay?
Okay. Is that understandable, Jean?
Mr. Mayor, I will vote to take it off the agenda if you put it on the agenda.
And we also have another councilman that will vote to put it, take it off the agenda, so we will, again, we will consider it.
It's your decision.
Yeah, it will be my decision, but if it comes to, to the council, on the, for presentation, it will be asked to be removed.
Mr. Mayor? We might not even hear it, so. You know, I don't think that this necessarily needs to be postured as a contentious issue. I think that if I'm interpreting correctly, what the, what the majority of the council is saying is that there's a desire to hold a public forum. And I think that it's being viewed as necessary to hold that public forum before anything either gets fast-forwarded or delayed. But it seems to be the will of the council at this point, that whatever's proceeding, as of today, is going to continue to proceed as it is proceeding.
And just for a point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that once the bidding process begins, then all of that information becomes public knowledge. That's my understanding also, that were we to have a public forum, let's say, tonight, or next week, that a lot of that information that would be included in the bidding process would not be available to the public. And therefore, again, that's my understanding, because of that lack of information, a public forum at this point would be premature. So, Mr. Bellis, do I understand that correctly?
Mr. Mayor, councilman, you do. In fact, I had met with representatives of this group and explained that to them in great detail, that a number of the questions they were asking, I did not have the answers for. That until the scope of services, scope of work was completed, we couldn't tell you what the details were that they were trying to produce the argument about, and that anything that would give an unfair advantage, once we had that scope of services in preparing the bid, which will be done by an independent contractor, would also not be able to be revealed to the public.
You know, I'm sorry, we have a lot of information that-
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Bellis has the floor. When he's done, you can-
And I had suggested, and they had accepted at that time, in fact, I had received, after that meeting, a follow-up email and phone call requesting that the item be taken off the agenda until, in fact, that information was available. However, I believe that there are, the public speakers are recommending something else today, which is not to hold a public forum, but to simply stop the project as it is now and not go forward with the bidding. And that is, I recommend, given the discussions that are going on, both with the engineers and the FAA, that are of a delicate nature, that, that would be ill-advised at best at this point.
May I speak?
Go ahead.
We do not need the engineering plans to be able to have a forum. Most of our concerns are not going to be in those engineering plans. I'm not concerned about the release of the engineering, the technical details of the building of the airport. There is another group that you may have talked to, Rick Bellis. I know that I asked you three times. Would you please put us on the agenda, so that we can delay the bidding, we would like to delay the bidding until this goes out to the public. Once the bidding starts, the wheels are in motion, and this has not been vetted in the public at all. So, just wanted to clarify that. We don't need the bidding, we don't need the engineering plans for a forum.
We can move forward with the forum then, Mr. Bellis. We can get that scheduled. That's not a problem. If the questions can't be answered because there's confidential information, we just can't answer the questions, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest that, that this is an issue that comes up almost every month.
Yeah.
And there have been extensive meetings by staff with representatives from this group, and their questions have been answered, and it is very clear that they represent a view that they do not want anything at the airport. And I think council understands that. I'm not sure, going through the exercise of a long meeting, to reaffirm that they're opposed to the airport is going to add anything to the debate, because as has just been expressed, this is not about the technical details of the capacity of the runway, the length of the runway, the type of aircraft. It's just, we don't want it.
I don't know if your mic, is your mic on?
They don't want us to hear.
What he was saying is that, no matter what, if we have a forum, it's not a matter of how long the runway is, how the runway's built, it's a matter of, you just want to stop the airport, period. Is that correct?
No, not necessarily.
We want the public to know what's happening.
She suggested an alternative plan.
So, I guess, I think this is something that's been going on for 30 years, right, councilors?
Yes, sir.
I believe, over 30 years, and I think there's been a number of public hearings and public comment. But what we will do is, we will consider it to be on the agenda at our next meeting, and at that time, if there was a vote taken and says, we're not going to stop the process, maybe then that will decide whether, how this moves forward. We're offering you an, an agenda to be able to hear what the, I guess, the possibility of how it's going to move forward. We're going to offer you that. If, if you want that, we can move forward with that at this time. We, we set it up once, and it was decided that we wouldn't move forward with it. I guess, Mr. Bellis, you heard from a number of people from this contingency, and we decided not to have that public forum. We can still have that public forum, if that is your request.
I just wanted to clarify, I can't say that I'm speaking for everybody, but I'm speaking for a lot of people, that we are not against a crosswinds runway. A crosswinds runway is generally no larger than the prevailing wind runway in most airports. But this runway is not really designed as a traditional crosswinds runway. It's designed as a runway that will bring in very big, heavy planes that need long runways and very strong runways to land on and take off on. And we're opposed to an airport that invites the traffic of very big planes to Taos. We are, I am absolutely fine and in favor of a shorter crosswind runway that is in service to our local pilots.
So- Counselor Hahn, I know that you're in support of having the, the public forum. We will, again, if we can get that scheduled, if that's your wishes.
Well, let me, let me just clarify. What I am in support of is, first, allowing those bids to go out, so that we, the public, then can attain and share all of that information in a public format. So, that requires, number one, the bids going out. Then, number two, we would set up a public gathering where pro and opposition could present the facts. And as a counselor, that is exactly what I need, the facts. And I think that would be the primary reason for a public forum after that, after the bidding goes out. So, my concern is this, if we have a preforum, will that then preclude a public forum post-bidding? I'm going to assume not, but I'll put the question out there. So, and the process then would look something like this, a general public forum, people can talk about all of this. Then the bids go out. Then we would have an official informational forum where all of the facts, pro and con, could be shared. Then the bids will come back, and then they will go through a vetting committee of some sort, and then it will come to the council for a vote to contract with a contractor or two, there's some discussion there. That's my understanding of this process. So, we have a ways to go. And I'm kind of thinking, personally, Mr. Mayor, that a, a preforum is perhaps spinning our wheels a little bit, and where we really need to get the information out is at that post-bidding forum. I do disagree with citizens who say, if the bidding process starts now, we're locked into it, and it's a done deal, and it's over. I don't agree with that. That's not what I'm hearing from anybody up here. And please correct me if I'm wrong, if, you know, because I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a planner, I'm just a regular guy, but that's my understanding. So, if I'm wrong, correct me now and correct me in public.
Mr. Caldwell?
Oh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Hahn, you know, I don't think this is a legal question. Until you sign a contract, you're not committed to anything. So, I agree with your assessment, that just because you start the process, it doesn't preclude or assume any further action beyond that.
Okay.
May I please say something to address what, what you just spoke about? As a member of a pub, public, what I've noticed in speaking to people, because of the fast movement of this whole proposal, you know, the, the immediate vote as soon as all the new people got into office, and now the bidding, that's, that's what people are hearing about. And so many people I have talked to think that it's a done deal because of that. So, I'm concerned that if the bidding is not delayed, that we have a public forum afterward, that there's still, that people are real, they're really going to, have an enhanced perception that this is a done deal. And they won't, they won't go to the public forum, because the news coverage of this hasn't really been great.
Well, Louise, with all due respect, I would disagree with that assessment. You could be right. But I do, you know, we heard from our attorney, I do think if there's a publicized public forum, we will have a good turnout post-bidding. But I just want to, we heard from our attorney, Mr. Bellis, my, my assessment is, is that essentially correct? Am I off-base in any way? So-
Mr. Mayor, councilman, I believe that's accurate. None of the staff have indicated, the airport manager, myself, or anyone else, that we would not schedule a forum as requested. We just felt that we already understand who the people are that are opposed to this, and that we're unable to provide any additional information- and that we're unable to provide any additional information, and they're, if their position is understood, then there's nothing new to add to the process until we actually know the cost of the project, we have the details of the project, and can provide an educational forum to the public in regards to being able to answer their questions more thoroughly, and you being able to make the final decisions in regards to the project. It will be a requirement that when we get all our contracts and bids in place, that we come back to you. That's a matter of law, that's not discretionary.
Well, cost has nothing to do with what we all mentioned today. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louise.
We'll get, we'll head on and move on from matters from staff. Cooperation agreement with North Regional Housing Authority, Mr. Jake Caldwell.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This item was put on the agenda at the request of the Northern Regional Housing Authority, which is the authority that's assuming all of the former, formerly Tous County Housing Authority units. I'm hoping that in the audience is somebody from Northern Regional to help explain the need for this cooperation agreement. Elizabeth, are you here? Elizabeth, I kind of get stuck in the corner. If you wouldn't mind going up there and introducing yourself, and then the two of us can kind of do our best to try to talk the council through what's being proposed, if you don't mind.
Okay. Thank you all for having me. I'm Elizabeth Metwar, and I'm working with Smart Incorporated. We've been contracted by Northern Regional Housing Authority to manage the housing, Tous County Housing Authority presently, and we're also going to manage for Northern Regional Housing Authority. As part of the transfer, the Department of Housing and Urban Development has required a list of assumption documents that we have to gather on behalf of the transition from Tous County to Northern Regional.
One second. Go ahead, go ahead and finish up, I'm sorry.
I'll have a question after she finishes.
Okay. In those assumption documents that we're required to gather, we have to have a cooperation agreement from the Town of Tous, the Town of Cuesta, and the County of Tous. Because the housing units lie within all of those different areas of the town here in Tous. We have 83 units, we have units in Cuesta, and then we also have units in the county. So, this agreement is required in order for us to proceed with the transition. HUD has to have this document signed and delivered before August the 1st. The transition for the public housing units and the Section 8 units are on schedule to be transferred from the county to Northern Regional August the 1st. The town, I mean, the County of Tous has already signed the cooperative agreement, and also the Village of Cuesta.
Councilman Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just for clarification, the way I read the agreement almost sounds like the town still owns those housing units. And I believe that we deeded those over to the county about 10 or so years ago, so I just don't quite understand the language in the agreement. I can understand that, that if there was an issue that came about concerning zoning or other authorities, or requirements of utilities and that sort of thing, that there would be a cooperative agreement with us and the units. But I'm just questioning the language and the way it's written.
The language in the agreement, the reason the language is that way, this document, if you'll look at it, was done in 1968. The Department of Housing and Urban Development told us, if we make one change to the agreement, it has to go to the attorneys, they have to review all of the language, and it will delay the transition. We understand, we have all of the deeds, where you all deeded everything to the County of Tous, all of those documents, the deeds of trust has been recorded, you know, underneath the county. And this cooperation agreement is because the units lie within the Town of Tous.
And Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Peralta, I would, I would add to that, that in my opinion, this agreement means very little. You know, it defines terms, including the term "project," and the way the term "project" is construed under the agreement that's before you is as the existing 83 units. And I don't believe that that project could be expanded unilaterally without revisiting this cooperation agreement. And really, the force of the agreement is to say, with regard to the project, that the town will abide by state constitutional provision regarding the enforcement of property, both real and personal property taxes, by assessing instead of property taxes, a tax in lieu thereof, in exchange for the provision of these housing units to qualified individuals, and that the town will provide services to these units if they're not already being provided. Well, of course, they're already being provided, and really, the only enforceable provision of the agreement is that if the town is unable to provide those services, that the Housing Authority will provide them, and deduct the costs of providing them from those in lieu of fees, which the town frankly has no ability to enforce in the first place. The town is, of course, not the taxing authority when it comes to real and personal property taxes. So, it's kind of a circular argument, but the reality is that HUD is requiring this. It's requiring the use of this form, and it's not really well-suited to our statutory construction here, but I tend to agree that we should just do it, and allow Northern to proceed with this, this sort of turnover.
I don't disagree with that at all. I just, it just seemed kind of interesting to me that the way it was stated was like, we have this ownership, and we are going to turn it over, but yet we don't have the ownership to turn over anything. And the fact that Pelt grants come back to the county and not to us anyway, so...
And Mr. Mayor and council...
I move the approval.
We have a motion, and it's just one of them things that was developed in 1965 that hasn't been taken out the books yet, and it's part of the requirements, is the way I understand it and the way I look at it.
That's correct.
We do have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
And thank you, and just...
Thank you all.
For our information, how is it going with the Regional, Northern Regional Housing Authority?
The transition...
Transition, yes.
The transition is moving very well. We got our first set of documents in to the HUD office on Thursday of last week, and we have the final set to go in the fir, after the 1st of August. So we have to have all of these documents signed, recorded, and everything, and into HUD, so that when the transition comes over, we can actually file everything.
I know that there was some plans on, some work on one of the parks there by the, by the theater. Is that still an ongoing project?
That is an ongoing process right now. We're in the process of assessing all of the necessary materials and everything we're doing. We have someone on staff that's looking at everything, getting cost estimates as to what that is actually going to cost, so that we can get that implemented, yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, and if I could just add, I know we've got several things left on the agenda, but I was first contacted by Mildred Motley, who is the acting or interim executive director of the Housing Authority. And I've encouraged her to come introduce herself to the mayor and the council and Mr. Bellis, because once the dust settles from this transition, I think there's a great hope that Northern Regional Housing Authority can become a partner to the town for purposes of some or all of our future affordable housing endeavors. It certainly would be nice to have an entity with a great deal of experience in that regard. And once again, I hope to sort of be able to develop that relationship as things get kicked off here. So thanks, Elizabeth, for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and hope we can foster this relationship.
Sure.
Thank you. So then, Item B, Resolution 1434, consideration possible approval of Resolution 1434 to complete the execution and delivery of a local government planning grant for $20,000 that will use for the economic development plan that was adopted under Resolution 201424, along with the planning grant agreement with New Mexico Finance Authority and the certificate of authority for this grant. And Martha, I know this is something that we continue to look at, and it's, you know, we just, I guess there's another loophole or another hurdle that we need to cross to get this $20,000 that was put out there for this grant, to get it refunded. And I think Counselor Peralta might have a question.
Yeah, I do have a question on this. Is this a new grant, or is this an old grant?
No, this is, this is the existing grant that was previously procured by the previous staff, and...
This is the one that was used, that we got the report on a couple of months ago?
Right. And then we thought that all we needed was a resolution in order to collect the money from the New Mexico Finance Authority. We did not realize that they have their own boilerplate resolution that they wanted us to use, as well as an agreement that the town would use the $20,000 only for an economic development plan, and that plan is indeed complete. And so what we did is, basically, it's their language, we changed it by putting in your names as the council. And then I also referenced that last resolution, it was Resolution 2014-24, which is where we formally adopted the, the, what we, we called it the Tous Economic Development Action Plan, and so that's what you're remembering, and that was several months ago. So we're just trying to clean up the paperwork to receive the $20,000 from this previous grant.
Thank you, Martha.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? What's the wishes of the council?
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing one, call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, while Martha's here, I'd like to thank her for her service to the town, and for those that don't know, she has tendered her resignation. And I think she's done a great job through a very tumultuous period with little or no assistance, and approached it with a very professional manner, and there have been nothing but good things said by the community, and to this date, I hope she will reconsider.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Martha.
So, under Town Manager's Port, Employee Compensation, consideration possible approval of the employee's schedule of compensation for the increases, Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Mayor, since this particular variation of the plan, and hopefully the last variation of the plan, I guess it has to be, because there's no money beyond this. It identifies on specific individuals and titles and compensation based also on review of managers of individuals, all as per, I feel, the direction of the council. I would ask that we defer this matter into the executive session, and we can come back at the end of the executive session if you desire to take formal action.
So moved to defer, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we would hear this then in that motion under 12D. That would be...
Yes, sir.
Direct the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
So we'll go under Matters from the Mayor and Council, Appointment and Planning, Appointment of Planning and Zoning Commission, consideration possible approval of appointments to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. Council, you know, we did bring this before you another time, it didn't move forward, it wasn't, we had a motion, but we didn't move forward on it. We do have a few changes on it now. We, I hope that we can move forward on it. It is my recommendation that we move forward on it. We need to put people in these positions, and, and I think it is an opportunity for us to have a number of individuals in our community represent us on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, council?
Mr. Mayor, if I could...
Please.
You've also passed out a change in...
Nope. The Historic Commission, yes, go ahead.
Right. My question is, when do you plan to bring this forward for approval?
On the Historic Commission?
The language.
The language, I would, right now, the way I understand.
Mr. Mayor, I included that in a packet for advisory purposes only, because it involves the change of the ordinance as part of a bigger package. I'm looking for input before we go out to the advertising of the ordinance, if there are any changes the council wants on that.
The only question I have, looking at it, is that you have only, on this language, you have only one member-at-large, yet we have two members-at-large on the list of appointments.
I...
Would we want to change that language?
I believe that the language that's proposed would include these individuals in that they represent a group that provides services within the district, or operate a business within the district.
Okay, so David Henry has a business within the district, or...
Mr. Henry would serve as the, as the at-large. Mr. Figueroa is the president of the Arts Council, and I believe the treasurer of the Historic Society. Mr. Christmas, probably raised...
Let me go back to, to Mr. Figueroa. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure how they, how he lands within the language, okay? Is the historic preservation or the Arts Council address within the city limits?
The Arts Council maintains an office within, as does the Historic Society, within the old county courthouse on the plaza.
Okay, so under that definition, then he would meet the criteria of the, of the language?
That is correct, as representing a community organization providing services to the historic overlay zone.
So I would change that to show him as...
Mr. Mayor... Business within the, within the district. I might have to jump in here.
Please, Jake, help us out.
A notice has already been published indicating the intent to consider the adoption of an ordinance revising the current ordinance, consistent with the language that I think has been presented to you. And that, that ordinance will be heard in public hearing on August 5th. Now frankly, there's no reason that you can't consider changes to the ordinance, as long as they don't, you know, alter the entire scope or purpose of the ordinance at the date of that hearing. But because it's a public hearing, I think that we should cease discussing it until that date, unless we're going to scrap it entirely.
I'm just trying to get the individuals being appointed as to whether or not they'll meet. And that's why I'm not discussing the ordinance, I'm discussing the individuals and their qualifications, that's all.
And Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Peralta, on that note, I think it's important to remember that the only agenda item on today's meeting is the appointment of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I think there can be some discussion about how to deal with membership on the Historic Preservation Committee, but actually making appointments or changing the existing appointments today would probably be ill-advised in any event.
The memo I have from the mayor is for both Historic Preservation and the Planning Commission?
And, and it is on there. I apologize, Councilman Peralta, it should have only been Tous Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's the way it reads on the agenda, and I apologize for confusing the situation by getting the Historic Commission on there. We were just trying to, so, again, the...
You're going to bring the Historic Commission in a later date then?
Correct. We will be bringing it back. I know that we did, there was approval, but we will be bringing it back because there has been some changes to it, so, so, okay? Sorry about that, apologize. So, Appointment of the Planning and Zoning Commission, consideration possible approval of the appointments of the Town... of Appointments of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, and the way it reads is Janda Bay is the, term expires 12/31/16, she's a resident. James Pollard, term expires 12/31/16, he's a resident. Dennis Garcia, term expires 12/31/15, a resident. Doug Patterson, term expires 12/31/15, that's at-large. Justin Lee, term expires 6/30/16, is a resident. Billy Romero, term expires 6/30/15, a resident. And Eddie Lucero, term expires 6/13/15, resident. Counselors?
I was hoping that in lieu of Mr. Patterson, that we might consider Mr. Manning, who we had an application from prior.
We did, I did review the application. I know that we want, you know, this can, you know, there will be some expiries in '15, and hopefully, we would consider him in that term. You know, there needs to be some consistency or continuity on some of these boards, so that, you know, as we, there's projects that have been out there that are continuing to move forward, that we need to move forward on, and if we don't have any overlap, it becomes a problem. But council, I mean, you know, everybody, it is up to the council to approve these, their recommendations by myself, of myself, but again, it needs to be approved by the commission, by the council. So, what is the wishes?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask why Mr. Luks was not reappointed to the planning?
Well, again, in our last meeting, we had Mr. Luks's name on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we could not get a, I guess, a second to Counselor Peralta's motion. We felt we needed to go back, because there was not a second to the motion, and try to find somebody else within the, those that had applied for the position, or had shown interest to the position, so that we might move Planning and Zoning Commission forward. We've continued to ask for people in the community to step forward and be part of it. But I'm just trying to do the best I can, so we have people that are willing to serve and move forward.
I just have a real big concern when, you know, like, earlier, we heard about, you know, a former council member who was benefiting from his position, and I just feel the same way about the commissions as well. You know, there's a sweet deal there at the school, and I just feel like somebody neutral would be more beneficial in the long run.
I'd like to thank these applicants. I think they're well-qualified, and I'd like to move that we go ahead and approve this.
We have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, for those that aren't familiar with the name, that is the new name on there, James Pollard, he is with UNM and supervises their construction projects, and also lives, I guess, within a couple of blocks of the university down here. And we'd had some contact back and forth with UNM about their plans for the future in the downtown, and I guess there was a thought that in a lot of cities, when you have a large hospital or an educational institution in the downtown, particularly in the historic district, and you have parking issues, it's helpful to build a liaison relationship with that institution, so that you're all on the same page going forward, and you understand how things that develop in the downtown affect each other. He also has served at least six years in a prior capacity on the Planning Commission.
We do have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second to that motion? Hearing no second to the motion, the motion dies, we'll go back? We find consensus on how we can move a Planning and Zoning Commission forward? We'll try.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like that we reevaluate Mr. Luks for the Planning and Zoning Commission, because I think it's extremely disingenuous that an individual that's served as long as he have, he has, and still maintains desire to serve, especially on a volunteer position, be at least afforded the opportunity to continue to serve, especially when we have had such a hard time filling positions, maintaining quorums. And the one thing I've noticed is that he is present at all meetings.
Okay. All right, we'll just go ahead and move on, and we'll try to figure out a way to bring you back and figure it out. So, go ahead to go to Matters under Mayor's Update. Again, you know, we had a great opportunity for the governor to be here, was, you know, TAO's, or I believe it's TAO's True, is there, or council?
New Mexico True.
New Mexico True, and I'm sorry. It was a great opportunity to be with her. She explained the whole program. They reviewed some of the commercials that will be aired, and the secretary was great. I guess she's, I guess she's full of energy. We've met with her several times, hopefully that we can collaborate with that particular opportunity that is afforded us, so that, you know, a number of those people that were on those commercials were actually TAO's people, and it's a great opportunity for us to collaborate. So, the other thing is, we did have a meeting last night with the constituents and businesses and people of the farmer's market. There was recommendations brought up, there is opportunities for us to improve. You know, we were tasked with, I guess, by the downtown area to how we can approve it. We've thrown out ideas out there, we're trying new things. There is always going to be some people that say it doesn't work, other people say it works great, but what we want to do is have a good, medium, middle-of-the-road, so that we can continue to move forward. So, there was some opposition, there was some good feedback, and we've taken notes. We're going to continue to try to address those concerns. I know the chief has already, believe, talked to one of the proponents of getting one of the buses through there, and we're going to try to move forward and try to find other avenues to mitigate some of those concerns in the downtown area. So, just council, that's something that came from that meeting. Under Council's Report, start with you, Counselor Hahn, if you have anything to report.
I have nothing.
Counselor Peralta?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, I do, as I had the privilege, and I hope that Councilmember Hahn got some much-needed rest on his trip out of state with his, well, out of town or out of state?
Town.
Town.
State. Briadosos in the state of New Mexico.
Okay.
Really?
Didn't know where you went. But I did have the ability, as his alternate, to attend the TAO's Regional Landfill Board Meeting and the Intergovernmental Council Meeting. And just one real quick area of business that I think would be who Counselor Hahn to just stay abreast upon is the fact that Colfax County has asked to, or petitioned the city to start bringing their solid waste into our facility, our waste facility. And I did have some concerns with it, just with regards to how quickly our landfill is filling up, and our need to accelerate into another cell, and whether or not this venture would cause that to increase, which I'm sure it would. But at the same point, just some real broad general questions with regards to whether or not they have a recycling practice in place within Colfax County, and exactly what portions of Colfax County that does encompass. Is it Colfax all the way to Raton? I seriously doubt it, but I guess it doesn't hurt to pose the questions that are out there. So, if you can just keep an eye on that one, greatly appreciate it.
Thanks for attending, Mr. Gonzalez. Was Mr. Espinoza there from?
Yes.
And was French able to get an estimate from Colfax? Is he working on that?
He's working on it.
So, we'll get a report next month as to the feasibility of that, and whether it meets within our own financial timelines, which is crucial. We weren't expecting cell development to occur much more quickly than it already is, so that'll be crucial. So, he's tasked with that, and, okay.
Yep.
Thank you, and thanks for taking the time.
No problem, thank you.
Just a question. Okay, Councilwoman?
I'll have a report at the next town council meeting for TCEDC.
Okay. Thank you. So, go under Personnel Matters, Discussion Decision Regarding the Following, and there'll be two items under that, one to do with the, regarding the town attorney position, and the other one regarding the compensation plan. I know the town attorney would be under exemption, 1015-1H2, turn to Jake, would be, is that the exemption for the other one also?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, council, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Quick little break.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, for the purposes of the public that are here and the media, we anticipate we will be back here at 6 o'clock.
The record should reflect that the town council went into executive session to discuss items 11A and 12D, both pursuant to Open Meetings Act exemption 10-15-1H2, which allows for the discussion of limited personnel matters, and that the council limited its discussion to those matters, and that no decisions were made, and no action was taken.
We have a motion to accept the town attorney's report?
So moved.
Mr. Mayor? We have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Counsel, just make a recommendation that we proceed with offering Susan Baker a position, giving myself and the town manager the authority to negotiate this contract within the parameters of the budgeted amount that we have budgeted, and with negotiation up to one month severance pay. So moved, Mr. Mayor? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If none, not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes. Okay.
Rick's on with the pay classification.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have another motion on the?
Compensation plan.
Compensation plan, so we have that.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
To?
To accept, yeah, the agreements of the compensation, employee compensation plan.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion, and for discussion, I would ask Rick to explain the plan, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. This is a compromise plan that we believe addresses the concerns of the council and the employees on two different levels, and that is to adjust for the cost of living through an initial 25 cent per person increase in the hourly wage, and that will be for all employees, which is a change from the previous motions we had. So, all employees, exclusive of police who have their own plan, temporaries, part-time, and probation. So, anyone that's got a year or greater will get that 25 cent increase. That will go into effect as described in a letter to the employees, beginning with Saturday, the 19th, so that'll be reflected in current pay period. That affects 118 employees. In addition, 47 of those employees will just get the 25 cent increase. 71 of the employees will get additional compensation, and that will be at one of three levels. If after the 25 cent increase, anything up to 24 cents additional in hourly wage would bring them to their current step that they should be at, they will receive that amount. For anyone above the 24 cents, up to $3 an hour behind in longevity, they will get an additional 25 cent increase. For those above the $3 an hour, they will get a 50 cent increase. And the total cost of that compensation package with benefits will be $130,889, I'm sorry, All of these increases will become effective with the current pay period that began Saturday. So, those guys that worked fiestas, hooray, you get a boost. And a letter will be going out, there'll be a management meeting, and there's also the morale committee, which worked on this, will be meeting later this week, and we will discuss in detail, we'll provide the department heads with additional information. And I want to say that this is not the end of it. We will attempt to do more, but a number of concerns came up during these meetings, particularly in which the managers reflected that one thing we didn't want to have happen was that people that have worked very hard, or at a super advisory level, are passed by other people simply based on number of years at pay grade. So, we will be working on a performance-based, severance, performance-based evaluation system for the coming year, and try to get the department heads and employees very involved in participating in it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. On paper?
Aye.